Alfred and David Mead. Okay.
Hang on, let me just let everybody in.
All right. David Rowell, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Alfred, you there?
Yeah, I'm there. I'm here. I'm somewhere.
Hi, Alfred.
All right. Let's open this meeting. Our meeting is opened at 7:01. Announcements, open session, public comments. Anybody have anything?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Okay. I'd like perhaps at a future date.
Before I. Before I leave announcements, um, this should be the last Zoom meeting. Meaning the Zoom meeting in its entirety, just Zoom. The secretary left. Karen left yesterday and because we moved, we had to move the meeting from yesterday to today. There was a room problem, so consequently, the next meeting, which we decide in July, should be, and they should have everything ironed out, where it will be a public meeting at the school, at the senior center, as well as soon capable. Do I have that correct, Rebecca?
Yes.
Okay.
So if you're able to be hybrid, but um, there are. Hybrids, so you'll be able, like if one member can come in through Zoom, but they, I think they request every other member to be there. So that you do have a quorum, not totally certain on that. We're still trying to get kind of the wording set up for that. But yeah, hybrids, so you could be in person and then you could have, you could zoom it so that, and the way that it works now is there's about a 60-inch screen at the COA or ACC, and it shows all the Zoom participants on the screen. So it's pretty cool. So you can do hybrid.
So if we have a member that does not or cannot participate in a public meeting, they are able to join the meeting through Zoom?
Yes, that's correct.
David Mead Fox.
Yeah, can it only be one person?
I'm finding that out. The select board has said only one person from their board. I don't necessarily think that means every other board, because if you're there and you're participating, like now, it's a quorum.
Yeah.
So I, I, I think that's only for the select board. I mean, if you're all going to be in on Zoom, you might as well keep it Zoom, but if you're going to be there in person, if say Beth and David meet are off, whatever you're doing away, you can still chime in through Zoom and it's still considered a quorum.
And you don't even have to be on Zoom. You could just call in.
Exactly, exactly.
I like, I like the faces. So that specifically, and I'm, David Mead can certainly answer on his own, but I just wanted to make that public to the rest of them. And I think that David, that Mead Fox, I think that will help you out.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd much rather be.
Yeah, we like to isolate the Giants fans.
I'd much rather be there with everybody, but I have, I've been advised for medical reasons to not do so as yet.
Good, okay. Well, we got, we got you covered, David.
Yeah.
Uh, David Rowell, did you have something under open announcements?
Yeah, under open meeting, this isn't to the entire board. I'd like them to perhaps consider at a later date, considering sending a letter to the Selectman Board of Health and Water Commissioners to put a moratorium on any new municipal water hookups until such a time as we can get irrigation off that. Because right now, we're having irrigation on the town system. As Dr. Singer is aware, in Pete Towne, Ontario, they prohibit that. So I think that policy should be in wealthly, because it's an incredible waste of water to water Cumberland Farms and the houses on Kendrick Avenue with potable water, just so they have a pretty goddamn green lawn.
All right, David Rowell. That's, that's an announcement. So what I'll do.
That's an announcement.
I'll put that, I'll put that on the agenda for July, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, good. Um, preliminary modification to subdivision. Um, Dawn, before I get your input, I don't have a conflict, but I did work on, on this house, so I, I just want to make it clear that I did do work on the house. I don't see that there's a problem with it. So I'm not accusing myself of it.
And I'd like to follow that up, Jerry. I live on that street. So I want to disclose that and make everybody aware, but I also do not have a conflict of interest.
Okay.
Which, which street do you live on?
San Piper Hill.
Yeah. You live on the actual San Piper Hill Road?
I do. I live at the bottom, and this is an issue at the top.
Okay. I mean, I, I thought you lived down the other end. I apologize for that.
No problem.
I do two boats on that hill.
Okay. So you got the gist of it. Um, Dawn, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Don Cool, Adamos Land Survey. I'm representing the Olbermans. We're requesting that the right-of-way at the end of San Piper Hill Road, as it intersects Chipman's Way, be expunged as it serves no useful purpose, and they own the P and that parcel, like that right-of-way expunged. I appreciate the notice of your non-conflict of interest, and I appreciate that you stayed on the board so that we can continue with a quorum. I feel like this is an easy matter. We're just kind of looking for some guidance here. I included the history of the project, starting in 1960, when San Piper Hill was first laid out. The cul-de-sac was modified in 1962 to its current form. And then in 1981, there was a further division of the property where the Wimberley, Wimber, Rimble Way was modified to intersect Chipman's Way. Anyway, the San Piper Hill dead ends at the property. Our, our property and the neighbor across the street, and serves no useful purpose to Chipman's Way, and there is no cul-de-sac on the ground. So we would like to have that right-of-way just expunged, so that that property can be combined into the lot. I expected this to be just a modification of the plan. We will require your approval since we do, since we are modifying a right-of-way. And I'm just curious as to any conditions or problems that y'all might see with this.
Members, who wants to go first?
I can go first.
David Rowell.
Because it's, yeah, just a question. Now that it is somewhat of a dead end, should there or should there not be a cul-de-sac for emergency rescue vehicles? Because that's commonplace in cul-de-sacs to do that. Why there, I know this, this plan has been modified several times, but at some point, when a cul-de-sac is created, one would think that a cul, a dead end, rather, a cul-de-sac should be made, or some sort of, or lack of that, a T-turnaround, you know, for a larger vehicle. So you're not driving on the neighbor's land, and there is a place for, i.e., rescue vehicles to turn around and not damage private, private property.
You want me to respond, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'd love it.
Yeah, I, I think before you do, Dawn, I think it's going to be, I'm, I've, I've got a situation as well, question, but I think I'm going to let some of the other members talk first. I think it might be a good idea to get an overview for you first. And I'm not looking to cut you off. I'm just looking to, to get you a gist of where the board is, at least, what they're looking at, and, and I can. So that's David's, that's David's question. Anyone else?
The, the other David has the same question as, as the other David.
David Mead, okay?
So I don't have that question.
Okay.
Because the, the end of the road is past the last two driveways. So there is ample space to turn around. If you were an emergency vehicle, you would typically be going to one of those two end properties, and it is actually before the end of the road. So I, I think, I think that's, that's why it has worked all this time, because there are two places on each side of the road for vehicles to turn around without a cul-de-sac.
Okay. Alfred?
Yeah, um, I have a problem with no cul-de-sac there. Um, I, I understand that it's worked. But when the fire department and the ambulance go there, they don't just take the ambulance. There's a half a dozen other people who show up and the police crews and the rest of the stuff. You know, I think that personally, this never should have lost a cul-de-sac or the thing at the end of it. And I question under the same thing that went on on Ocean View Drive, this needs to be visited to fix it properly. You know, if you're going to do away with a road, at that point, make the road go around the whole subdivision like it was supposed to. I, I guess, I, I have a problem with it, with it, with a dead end part of it. Doesn't seem to be any concern about undeadedding and, and the fact that we're going to take a piece of property and turn it into a, a building lot without a benefit to public safety at this point, on a subdivision that was done in the 60s. I'm a little concerned about that. That's my, my take on it, because I imagine if you even do the, um, the access to it, that, that road's going to be over 10% coming up the hill. I don't know if it's a, I don't know if it's a can of worms you really want to open.
I think.
Because my, my understanding is due to the last one that was in the seashore, through Mr. Zender's interpretation and the way he brought it to the board, is all that stuff is opened again. So I mean, it's not like we're being asked to do away with one thing. If we're asked to do away with something, we can also ask the applicant to fix some of the other deficiencies, unless I'm incorrect. That's a question to you, Gary.
All right. I have a, I'm, I'm driving down the same similar road as two other members. I went up the other day and looked at it. The last time I was up there was years ago, when I was working on the house, but what I did get, Dawn, from all of the information, and thanks for the backup, looking at all the plans, when I drove down to the end, because it had been so long since I had been there, it took me a while to get reoriented, because I'm looking for the road at the end that never went through. And come to find out, after I left the subdivision, went down to Cove Road and came back in the other road, two driveways are off of it, but the road's never constructed. So I think that's one of the reasons that in the past, no cul-de-sac, true cul-de-sac, was ever constructed up there, because there was a paper road.
Correct.
And Alfred, Alfred's bringing up a very large concern that recently happened in the National Seashore. And I certainly don't mean to contradict you, Alfred, but it wasn't, it wasn't Ben Zender brought up the, the situation. It was the individuals fighting against the project, Suterni. And, and what has come to light, the planning, the planning board, this planning board, Wealthly Planning Board over the last 30 years, has always taken the position that a pre-existing, non-conforming subdivision did not have to bring their roads up to current subdivision code if they were doing any modification. We have made individuals that had enough land to split off. We have, in fact, asked them to make sure they've got proper access in front of the house. But was brought to light was that we can apply where necessary, if we choose to do so as a board, that if someone wants to modify a pre-existing plan, that we can bring it up to code.
Hey, Jerry?
Yes, David Mead Fox.
Just a clarifying question. I'm looking at the, this property in this area on the town atlas, and I, I don't see what you mean about the road that was supposed to continue that did not.
The road that goes into the way I at least read the plan is the road that we're talking about that widens up to, and I will admit, I'm going to have to dig out the plan, but I think, Dawn, is it 30 feet wide now? At that end?
Not including the cul-de-sac or including the cul-de-sac?
Well, including the cul, well, it's not a true cul-de-sac. All it is is a wide. It's the width of that area.
It's 30 feet going into that. Mr. Mead Fox, he's talking about Chipman's Way is not constructed. It's just a bigger road on the ground.
Oh, yeah, I know that actually, right. I walked by there a few times. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So what we're looking at is the road that you want to decrease. And I think that's probably only, it's, what's the width?
It's 30, 30 feet is the road right-of-way. The cul-de-sac is, I think, 60 feet across. All right, I dropped something. I didn't want my dog to eat my pen.
Go ahead.
So, so the.
Bonnie, I see you here. Go ahead, Dawn.
Wait, I'm sorry. So the question to me was, the width of the road is 30 feet, and the width at the end of the road at the cul-de-sac is 2420, probably about 80 feet across, including the rounding.
Talking roadway, not road.
Yeah, the road layout.
The road layout.
Yeah.
Road layout. Just want to clarify that.
The road layout.
Itself is nowhere near that.
No, the, the, the road layout within the subdivision, instead of 40 feet, like we require, is now, is 30 feet.
It's 30 feet.
Was then. What happens is when you pass, I believe, when you get by within a couple of feet of both driveways, certainly the driveway on the right, not the driveway on the left, away from the water, which, which, um.
Which is along with.
That. That road basically is very soft. Really not built as a cul-de-sac, simply there's no trees in it, but there was no trees on that hill, basically, to begin with. Uh, they were all bulldozed and flattened. But that other road that it went into would have been certainly, in my mind, logical to decrease what you're talking about to 30 feet, consistent with the rest of the road, if in fact that road bent to the left and went back out again, because now you've got a situation where emergency vehicles, where, um, fire trucks, things of those natures, nature, could turn and go back out again without turning into somebody's driveway, which, which I believe is a problem up there. The road itself may be laid out 30 feet, but the road probably is only 14.
If that.
It, it, I think it's 13.
I, I, I was being generous by a foot, foot and a half. But I was going to say 12, but I was going to give the benefit of the doubt to say maybe 14, but I think 12. You know, really, it is a serious problem if you get a fire anywhere up in that subdivision or emergency vehicles, because they're going to have to turn around in someone's private driveway. And a lot of those driveways have, have paved and literally are narrowed down to probably less than eight feet.
Well, and some are very short.
They're not paved.
No, I think the conservation. Right. So that even makes it worse in my mind, because you get, you get fire trucks, you get, um, emergency vehicles, you get the rescue squad trying to turn around on dirt and stone. It gets really difficult, and a lot of people have landscaped, so they can't turn around in a lot of different places. So I, I see them, I see where your clients are going, Dawn. I definitely see where they're going. It seems like a wasted space, but if I had my druthers, I'd really like to see it hardened completely. So that's where the emergency vehicles could turn around when they get up there. Because if they get halfway up to a house on the hill before they make the left turn to come parallel to the water, they got their work cut off to turn around there. So.
Jerry, the other thing, I think, is that those, if I recall, walking up there in the wintertime, these driveways are also quite short.
Yeah.
Which does, which makes it much harder to turn around too.
So I think with that, Dawn, and that's why I was trying to go, now you got it on the table. Bonnie, you had a question? Is there any input you wanted before Dawn's answers some of our questions?
Um, I guess I just, um, does, I just didn't understand the, the reason for wanting to do this. Does it mean that the, the house could add another bedroom, because there's more area? I mean, or, yeah, I just, and I don't know what that particular little piece of land looks like now.
It's really not attached to the house.
It's what?
It's not attached to the house. It's an independent piece of land in the yard, but it, there's no way it connects to the house.
No, no, I think, I think Bonnie's right in the sense that this now makes it, would make it from a three-quarter acre lot to a full acre lot. And with advanced technology, instead of four bedrooms, you could get five bedrooms in there. So it is a big windfall to change the size of this lot, because right now it's under, uh, just under 37,000 or whatever. This addition would make it a full one acre, thus enabling you to put in an IA system and get five bedrooms out of it. So that is a big deal. And you're right for picking that up, Bonnie.
Well, I'm more, I'm more concerned, if, as again, if, if, if the other road was through and they wanted to do it, if, if they can pick up an extra bedroom, that's, I don't really have a, I may, personally don't have a major problem with that. The problem is, it, it is not, we all know, it's not going to be constructed. To construct that would be far too expensive. I don't even think the grade, they could get the grades within the slopes, because I think it's only 30 feet, and so close to the wetland, it'd be a major problem. So I, I don't think that's ever going to happen. So it's a matter of what do we have on the ground and, and is this modification making it more difficult for the town of Wealthy Rescue Squads and for people living up in there to get fire and rescue and everything else up there? Dawn, I think you've got an overview of where the board's going, so I'm going to turn it back to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I noticed Mr. Olbermann wanted to say something. No, you're good. I want to just say that, you know, this is, it's not a new situation. It's 62 years old when the right-of-way was created for San Piper Hill. And it was, uh, that was 62 years ago. 60 years ago, Chipman's Way was laid out. So those decisions were made, you know, 60 years ago, uh, the amount of construction and whatnot. If you, if you modify this plan as requested, nothing's going to change on the ground. If you don't modify the plan, nothing's going to change on the ground. It's going to remain the same. Um, I, I'd like to take exception with, with Alfred's comment, that there is already a building on this lot. We're not trying to create a building lot. There's already residents on that lot, so let's get away from that issue. But, uh, you know, this is 60-year-old issue that is going to remain the same, no matter what y'all do. The only benefit is my clients will gain 3,400 square feet and square off that corner of their lot.
So what's the benefit to the town?
David, I have a, I would like to go through Jerry back to, to Dawn.
Alfred?
I never said that that was, was going to make that a building lot. I never said what was on that lot. I didn't say there was a house or there wasn't one. I want to be very clear. What's on that lot does not make a difference to me. It's the fact that the emergency rescue has to get there. And a night, 60 years ago, our fire truck was half the size of what it is today, and so was the ambulance. So I mean, I'm not going to debate the size of that stuff, but I, I want to be very clear for the record that it does not matter to me what's on that lot. It's the fact that we're taking an area out that is basically left for safety vehicles. Thank you.
I have another question.
Bonnie?
Yeah, um, what, um, so what is on this .08 acres now? Is it, is it completely wooded and forested, or is it an area, or is it an area where emergency vehicles can turn around now?
Don't let Dawn answer it. Go ahead, Dawn.
They, they can use, they can use my client's driveway, which is adequate for that. The, the property that's there now, it's not wooded at all. It's, um, I don't know what you want to call it. Pardon?
It's beach grass.
Beach grass. There's, there's nothing there. It's just, um, flat and clear. There's no trees. My client's driveway extends in probably about, you know, 80 to 90 feet. Anything could turn around in there. And, you know, as I said, nothing's going to change. My clients own this property already. They can use it to their advantage, however they want. They just can't include that area in their, in their lot. Uh, they can landscape it, um, you know, do whatever they need to with it. Nothing's going to change, regardless of your action tonight. My client just wants that added to their lot.
No, they, I, I disagree with that. They own to the center line of the road, but it is within the road layout. They can't landscape it. They can't fence it off. No, I disagree with you, Dawn, on that issue.
I see fences and right-of-ways all over the place, Jerry. Everybody puts fences in right-of-ways, and everybody, you know.
Just make it right.
David Rowell just summed it up. It doesn't make it right. And if, based on what we know right now, what happens when you bring something of this nature, uh, to the forefront? No, the eyes will be on it, no matter what the resort is, and, and I know the neighbors wouldn't do that anyway. That is a situation where it's going to stay laid out, and it's, nothing's going to happen to it.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, when, when, let me. Is it? And your clients certainly do not have to answer this question, Dawn. If it's 80 feet, why?
That's roughly at the intersection of Chipman's Way from my client's corner, across the, uh, the dead space, and then across San Piper Hill Road. That's the, roughly.
So when it opens up, we get the 30-foot laid-out road just past their driveway, and I think probably just past Nowell's driveway across the street, it then opens up at that particular point, at the initial point where it opens, what's the width of that road? Layout.
You mean at the intersection of Chipman's Way and San Piper? I'm not really sure what you're asking. We got a.
That's 80 feet. I know it is. When you come back to where the 30-foot layout ends and it widens, is it a, is it a square box, or is it sort of like a? I got to pull the.
It's like a trapezoid.
Right.
Then I get in there.
Jerry, Jerry's getting it.
That's what it looks like.
Yeah, we got that in our packet.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I got the big one.
So, can I just ask, Chipman's Way is the dirt road that borders the beach, right?
No.
No.
It's not a road.
Chipman's Way is the road, Bonnie, that borders the beach, ends in the Chipman's Way, that is not constructed.
Right, okay. So it is, I mean, because I've walked there, you know, I've bicycled and walked there a bunch of times, and so I thought Chipman's Way was right.
Chipman's Way comes in from Cove Road
Right.
straight through to the water. Literally to the water. To the top of that bay.
I see. Okay, right.
San Piper Hill comes into it, and then just before that is what the areas we're talking about. There are two houses, I believe there's only two, when you come in. I believe there's only two. When you come in off of Cove Road. There's two driveways. One swings to the left off of that road. And one swings to the right and that's basically where that particular road ends. It never went up the hill. And down. Um, I think that's one of the reasons why those planning boards never, in fact. Probably required a, a full turnaround cul-de-sac up there because that road was laid out. Um, you know, there's, there's a number of paper roads that would, uh, never really laid out in Wealthy. Most of them were Lieutenant's Island, Indian Neck, Old Wharf. All kinds of roads never laid, um, never, that were laid out but never built.
Hey, Jerry?
Yep.
Um, I just wanted to say, make one point. In this particular case, it seems to me, or maybe this is always the case when we do our deliberations. We have to think about not what the intention of the current owner is, but of what. Some unknown owner sometime down the road might decide to do with the property. And I think. Uh, I am concerned that some other owner, and no one can predict if you should, we don't have crystal balls. Could be in there and want to add, uh, a bedroom, which might or might not be advisable, but more importantly, it's the safety factor. I just, I don't see any way around it. I mean, that's putting that neighborhood at great risk. Uh, not to mention the first responders themselves. To if we squared off.
So, so I have a question.
Beth?
So it's a dead end now. It's been a dead end for sixty years.
Yep.
In order to make it something else, either a roadway that go, connects to Wimble. Or a cul-de-sac. How would that happen? Because. It's, it's a concept that's never been. Implemented. And probably will never be implemented. Because nobody wants more asphalt. That close to the water. And, and digging up that area. It's a cliff.
Right.
Is, is, seems unreasonable.
Well, I think it's instructive.
Oh, so what, whether we do anything or not. For it to become. A safe place for safety vehicles to turn around. How would that happen?
Well, it already happened, it's already available now, Beth, because it's eighty feet across at that point.
But nobody's done anything about it. Nobody wants it.
Well.
But they could drive it, Beth.
Huh?
They could drive it right now and pack it down if they wanted to. If we give it away, it's private property.
But, but that's what I'm asking. Who could do that?
Yeah.
The Fire Department.
I could do that.
Oh, Fire Department can't, Fire Department can't do it.
Who could do that?
Let me, okay, let me, let me bring this back. To answer that question. There is a way, I believe it can be done.
Okay.
It would require conservation approval. So. I'm going to ask the board to listen and I'm going to propose something to Dawn. To take to his clients. It's eighty feet up there. By the unbuilt road. You've heard and your client has heard. And I know they have the best interest of town in Wealthy at heart. That there is a major concern with fire and police and rescue. I'm wondering if there's a way. That you could come back to the planning board. And say, listen. We're willing to make a T-turn around. You've got a layout of forty foot on Chipman Way already. You've got eighty feet. Of thirty feet of width. You've got. Goes. It goes eighty feet, but it goes all the way down the hill. But. If you could find a way to get. A hardened. Turnaround. Such as a T-turn that we have allowed on many one, two-lot subdivisions. They've done a paper, they've done a paper cul-de-sac, but we've turned around and said, okay, do a pigtail. Give us an area where the police and fire can back a truck up if they have to. Not in somebody's private driveway, not over their lawn. Not disturbing their landscape, but do a, do a turnaround. Where they can back up. Back and forth. If they're going to do a three-point or four-point, doesn't matter. It's better than what's there at the present time. If they can come back and say, listen, we can make a turnaround. They could T-turn around. We can narrow this down to thirty feet for a period of. Or a distance of X. Make that T at the very end. So rescue squad, police, fire can turn around and come back out again. That might be a solution. To not only the applicant. Getting at least part of that. Land back usable. But it also would help the entire, now whether this, whether the client pays for it, whether everybody up there. Tips in a little bit because it's certainly in their best interest. To get, to make it as easy as possible for all rescue and everybody else to make, make a turn and get out, get in and get out, park vehicles. That might be a way that we can solve. Both problems. The problem that the client would like and the problem that the planning board is seeing. With no good access for emergencies up in that area.
So Jerry, what I hear you saying is it would be up to the community to make that happen. Is that correct?
It would be up to the individuals on Sandpiper Hill or the applicant to say, listen, I'm, I'm looking for. Whatever the acreage is. I'm looking for point eight acres or whatever it is. Um. However, out of that point eight acres, I'm looking to say, okay, we'll, we'll give up a. Forty or fifty-foot depth, uh, fourteen feet wide. At the very end where people can turn in, we'll harden it, we'll get conservation's approval. Sure, they will crush stone and some. Um, T-base. I'm sure that they're going to look at, look at it the same way we're looking at it. Uh, it's flat, there's no runoff. Um, it, it's sort of a, a meeting of the minds where I think all parties. Reach a consensus that. This might work. Um, I'm sure, Dawn, that you. Probably is certainly not in a position to make a, a judgment or a call at this point, but. Seeing the way the board is going at this point with the modification, I'm, I'm. I'll certainly gladly take a poll, but I'm, I'm not thinking it's going to happen.
Could I ask for a clarification on that?
Sure. Absolutely.
So could I go to my client and suggest to him that he extend? Sandpiper Hill Road into Chipman's Way and provide the turnaround within the layout of Chipman's Way? And in that regard, then you would allow the, uh, area to be expunged as shown on my plan?
Or it could be. If. I think the topography, and Dawn, I was only up there for a short period of time. Um. Normally I don't go as far as I did, but I know that septic system was installed and it looked like somebody had a run over that area. I believe the Chipman Way up in that area is as flat as the area you're talking about. I believe it crosses the hill and it's fairly flat there. There is thirty feet. Now, it does fall off at the very end down the hill. I'm not saying it all has, I'm not suggesting that it all comes out of. The thirty-foot layout of that road. I'm saying you have the end of this. Widened area, which we'll call in a cul-de-sac. And you have the thirty-foot width in Chipman Way. Somewhere at the end of those two, if you can create this kind of pigtail. I believe we might find. And I am not speaking for the rest of the board members, but certainly myself, I think we might find a meeting of minds.
I, I made a mistake here, Jerry. First of all, but Chipman's Way is forty feet wide. The right of way is forty feet wide, as in Sandpaper Hill is also forty feet wide. My error on that. But my question is, could we put the T-turn around in Chipman's Way? Would that satisfy you and the board?
If you can do it.
It might be a question. It might be a question of topography at that point, Dawn.
Well, it's got a, David, uh, Rouse, it's got a, I think, I think, yes, to answer your question, as far as I'm concerned, Dawn. If in fact, to David Rouse's point, if the topography meets it. If it does, I mean.
And doesn't, doesn't piss conservation off.
Yeah, but I mean, if it's laid out forty feet like the rest of the subdivision. Um, that's certainly, if you only need a T-turn around that's fourteen feet wide. That gives you some play. So I think you could create it there. If in fact you couldn't and you had to come into this other area. Four or five feet. I think. Based on both Chipman Way. And the excess area at the end. I think there is enough land that can satisfy the pigtail. And get your client. To. Drop that forty. Drop that area back to forty feet. And pick up, maybe not all of it, pick up a great deal of that area. And then the town comes out with a hardened. Pigtail turnaround. Where they could park their apparatuses, they could turn around, they could come back out again. And not worry after about backing all the way down the hills or back into somebody's driveway. Running over landscape, running over destroying driveways and everything else. That's my gut. That I think certainly has a little bit more merit than the way I see this modification going at the moment. Now, I'll go.
Um, I may have missed something, but who, who owns that land that is to be? Added to the parcel?
That's the point.
The, the land probably, and I'm. I always say this, I'm not an attorney, but as Dawn has said, and I think he said. Fairly clearly, if I was listening to him correctly, that the way these properties would deed it out, they would deed it out to the center line of the road, not by the road. Is that correct, Dawn?
That's correct. My client owns that piece of land that we're asking you to expunge the way through and he owns the center line of, of, of. Chipman's Way as well as Sandpaper Hill.
So. There's, there's basically. I'll get to answer your question quickly. There's almost three ways to control roads. One. Is the road is entirely owned by everybody in the subdivision. Two, they own to the, and they physically have it in a trust. Two, they own by the road and not to the center line. And the third is they own to the center line. That doesn't mean. It means that they own to the center line and can be. Can in theory use that as lot area. But. Probably for septic if the Board of Health allows it. But it does not mean that they can close off. Let's say the road's forty feet and they own to the center line. It doesn't mean they can close off their twenty feet. It's still within the layout. It's a matter of who owns it. Um, so I, I, I hope that answers your question and Dawn, if I am mistaken by any means, please clarify.
Yeah, they, they own the feet of the center line, subject to the rights of everyone that has rights in that road to the sideline.
Which would mean they couldn't close it. They couldn't do anything with it. Yes.
But is the center line to the middle of the widened part?
Yes.
Okay.
Most likely. Sure, because that's the way it's laid out unless Dawn tells me that they own to the center line of the road, but that, that is the road. I'm not the attorney. We're not, that's not our business, but yes, generally speaking, if you own to the center line. And you, part of it's forty feet, part of it's thirty feet, part of it's sixty feet, you own to the center, no matter where it is. So I think, I think the client has the ability to certainly do this. And because the client also fronts on, is it Chipman Way or Chipman? They own to that center line as well.
Mm-hmm.
Because they front both, on both roads on that, on those, those two end lots. Front on that road, those two lots to the center line. I'm sure that's the way they would deed it out. But again, I don't have a copy of the deed. Um.
Jerry?
So with that proposed, so not before I called on. I was just going to ask if anybody's got any questions from the board, but Alfred, go ahead.
Well, usually we see the deeds to see what is actually stipulated in that because when we've done other modifications and stuff to it. To a subdivision, that stuff is all furnished. Because. I believe that if you're going to take. Part of a right-of-way out of a subdivision. Um, it, it can affect the rest of the people. I mean, it certainly, they. They need to be notified. Um. It certainly isn't, in my opinion, something that we only notify the abuddas, abuddas, abuddas. I mean, that subdivision. Everybody in it has some controlling interest in the road, to the best of my knowledge. I think the deeds would show that. So I think that before I entered into what you've discussed, I'd want to see what the deed said.
Well, if, if.
Because, because they don't, even though they own interest in the road, correct me if I'm wrong. That doesn't mean that they pay taxes on it. It doesn't mean that it accounts towards their land area. And it also doesn't mean that it counts towards their setbacks.
So I think so, but, um, since we don't do a lot of modifications.
Yeah, but Jerry, my, my, my que- my, my question was. My question, I'll ask it again. Just because you own to, through your deed. The center of that road. It does not. Let me ask through you, to Mr. Poole. Does the lot area that you are showing for that parcel? Include anything outside of the lot in the road itself?
No.
I didn't hear. You say no?
I said no.
I'm trying to.
No, the question, David, David, uh, David Rouse, question is asked to David, uh, Dawn Poole.
Uh, so, so the, the area does not include any of the road right-of-way area. Area includes that area that they're allowed to build on, use for septic systems. It's not included in the area for Port of Health or for bedrooms. The right-of-way areas are not included. The, they own the fee in it, but it's not applied towards the building lot.
So, so I was correct in stating that the other people have rights of interest in that. It is not used for land size. And it is not used for setbacks. The only thing that they can use for land size and setbacks is what's actually. In the original plan that you have. And the road itself that we may or may not do away with at this point is not calculated into anything.
That's correct.
So the setbacks would, would change tremendously if you add forty feet to this lot.
Oh, they'd change back forty feet?
Yes, they would change by forty feet.
At the south, at the southwest corner, yes.
Yeah. On a modific- on a modification, Dawn, um. This is a, this is just like a subdivision. Planning board members, uh, preliminary subdivision plan. What we, what we agree to. Or we don't agree to anything. What we suggest. Is a preliminary. So that the applicant can file a, a definitive plan. And like a subdivision, have an idea of what the board will and will not accept. In the case of a modification, Dawn. Please refresh my memory. If it goes to a modification. And we have to add, advertise the modification to this subdivision. Will you not have to notify everybody within? That subdivision of the modification?
Uh, there, there's question to that as to the rights that extend beyond what's necessary to access your lot. It may not be that everybody in that subdivision has. Rights to this end of the road. So, um, you know, we would notify the abuddas for certain. It would be advertised. Um. I would suggest the, uh, client talk to counsel about notifying anybody else that may have rights in that, uh, area to be expunged. So we would investigate it at that point and do the appropriate things.
Well covered. Thank you. Um, so board members. Strictly now to board members, whether or not. The engineer or the applicant is even remotely even considering what I suggested. If all of the members have a grasp of what I'm suggesting. Is there any input from you as members as to what I suggested? Good or bad?
It seems reasonable to me. Uh, I still wanna look at the details, of course, and find out about the, the questions, or other questions that have been asked, but as an overall approach, it seems to be a viable, possibly a viable compromise, subject to further investigation, um, to both give the owner a bigger piece of land and create a safer turnaround.
Okay, thank you, David Mead. Anyone else? Any planning board members? Don, I see you, but any planning board members?
Um, I would like to just walk there and familiarize my, I, I think the, the discussion, I think I would understand your proposal much more clearly if I were there on the spot and seeing, seeing the, the piece of land in question and looking at how emergency vehicles might, might enter that area. Yeah. I mean, I, maybe I'm just suggesting a, a site visit. I don't know if it has to be a group site visit, but yeah.
Well, um, Jeff? I, I would gladly show it to you. I'm not a member of that subdivision, although I'm on the street, I'm in a different subdivision.
Hmm.
I still have the question. If the applicant had not brought this forward, we would not be changing that road, that dead end. No one would be changing it. So I, I'm confused as to whose responsibility that becomes. I think if I lived there, I might not want a cul-de-sac. I might like that it's a dead end. Because I'm not interested in extending the road to the end of the cliff. I mean, environmentally, it seems to me that that's questionable. To, to, to broaden that area in terms of whatever landscaping that would be, whether it's asphalt or hard turf or whatever.
But it could be done without going to the end of the road, Beth. If it had to be farther away from-
It'd be the end.
Then-
The cul-de-sac is after the road ends.
No, I understand where it is, but I've been up there, I know that area pretty well. If, it just would depend on the details of, is there a way to have a T-turn, not a cul-de-sac, a T-turn up there, at, at whatever distance from the bank where the land starts to go down?
Yeah, but it's past, it's past where the road ends now, it has to be.
Yes.
Where the road ends now is, is between two property owners.
Right, no, I understand, but, but, but the question is how much passed? We don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, it's probably, I mean, Don, Don can tell you exactly. He's got the plan.
Yeah.
He can tell you exactly from the time that road goes from forty feet till the time it chipped its way, I'm, I'm gonna say it's at least, it's at least a hundred feet.
Oh, but, and, in any case, Jerry, somebody mentioned earlier, I think it was David Rau or maybe you, that, that when something, it's true that it would have stayed the same, Beth, if they weren't here before us, of course. But when something does come up like this, do we have the, at least the opportunity, perhaps the obligation, to bring something up to code or up to a, a better situation? Kind of whether we want to or not, part of me wonders if we are-
Well, that's why I asked the question. So then who's responsible?
It would, it would be, okay, Beth, it, it would be the same, apply the same thing that we discussed on Ocean View Drive. We didn't make any decision on Ocean View Drive because the National Seashore and the clients had already made a decision and come up with the best thing that could possibly be done. But in this case, instead of the National Seashore and all the abuddhas coming up and discussing a reasonable solution, it's been brought to the planning board to find a reasonable solution. And this is where the court has said that you, you have the ability, you have the ability to take another shot at a pre-existing subdivision that didn't have to pave roads, that didn't have to build roads, that didn't have to meet current subdivision control law. You don't have to bring it up to code. But you can try and better the situation.
Right.
So-
That's what I'm talking about.
So I think that's what David Fox is, Mead Fox is saying, and I think that's what I'm saying is, I, and I mean this no disrespect, I don't really care who pays for it. Two abuddhas, three abuddhas, or the, or the applicant could pay for it. My, my situation is there is, someone is asking for something. And we have some problems on that particular subdivision in that particular area. And that if we can find a compromise to make it better, I think to David Mead's Fox, it's within our purview to do so.
Right, right.
We shouldn't care who pays for it. We shouldn't, like somebody's deciding to subdivide a road, a subdivision. We don't get involved in what subdivision is. We tell them what they have to do. That's their problem if they choose to do it.
And if they choose not to do it. Who enforces that?
Exactly. Who enforce, well, there is no enforcement, because in this situation, I mean, I could, I could certainly, if, if you wanted to, 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 for the applicant's sake, I could poll the board and say, based on the modification that's before us, and it's only preliminary, what are the feelings to grant this? I'm reading the planning board members as a chair and saying, right now, it's not going to pass. So I'm trying to see if I can put on the table some alternatives to say, okay, keep this in a preliminary stage, go back and discuss it, see what you can do based on the fact that we've got planning board members that look like they're not gonna proceed with it, as is, and see if we can't find a mediation point.
I get that. So the point is, the applicant, it's up to the applicant to come back to us with a modification to this plan.
Yes. Or drop it, or based on the-
Or drop it.
Or not do anything.
Or based on the applicant, seeing the discussion tonight and discussion with his engineer, their engineer, I'm sorry. Um, they may choose to say, okay, thank you very much, we tried, but no, we don't wanna put that much money into it. Um, we're very happy with the house setback the way it is, we're very happy with the privacy. Yes, we'd love to own it, but no, we're not willing to put any more money into it, end of conversation. Um, they could talk to their neighbors and the neighbors could say, gee, you know, that makes a lot of sense. I don't wanna see my fire, my house burned down. Um, if it's gonna cost me a little bit of extra money and I'm gonna get that back on a sale because it's, it's, it's safe. That's up to, that's up to them.
That's what I'm saying.
Right.
So i- in essence, it goes back to the applicant to pursue something modified to what they're asking for?
Yeah.
Or not? And then the community, that subdivision, would be responsible for implementing whatever they compromise-
Community probably wouldn't. It would be a matter of the applicant would, would probably go to a few of the abuddhas or whomever and say, okay, this is what I wanna do. The applicant could choose to say, wait a minute, no, I don't wanna even shake that, that tree.
Could I address one of, one of Mrs. Springer's points, though?
Certainly, yep.
Um, just to answer your question, Ms. Singer, uh, it's likely my client will do nothing, so the problem's gonna remain. The solution to that is for the town to take the roads and construct them in accordance with their, if, if, if mistakes were made sixty-two years ago, it's not my client's problems. It's the town's problems. If the town made mistakes, they can take the roads and construct the roads and make it safe. That's totally within your power to do that. And I don't believe it's my client's obligation to do that.
Right, so they would make the paper roads actual roads, the town would.
That's the easy solution, yes.
That is the easiest solution. I don't know if it's environmentally sound, I think, I think conservation would have to weigh into that.
No.
But, but that is the simplest solution.
Now, it, it may seem to be not only the simplest solution, it may seem to be a reasonable solution. But I can tell you right now, the town of Welfleet hasn't taken a town road in probably twenty years.
A, a-
They can't afford to.
And they can't afford to, number one, and, and when they did make the take, the last taking, it was a laid-out, defined, paved road with drainage. And that's why they took it. And then they realized, well, wait a minute, now we're responsible for everything. And when you own the fee in the road, now to make a taking, and again, I'm not an attorney, but now you're taking fee. You're not taking just a road laid out and defined to the lot line. Um, you're now taking a fee in a road. So it gets very costly. So for all intent and purposes, that's not gonna happen. And if the applicant chooses to say, thank you very much for your time and energy. Um, we're just, we, we just can't do it, we don't choose to do it. Then yes, it will lay the way it is right now, and we had a bite at the apple and it didn't, we couldn't find a happy medium and that, that's it.
Right.
Um, but, yeah, I've, I've gotta try, I've personally, as, as, I've gotta at least try to see if I can't get board members to see if we can't at least take the high road and find a moderating point where the town of Welfleet wins something and the applicant wins something. That's what I'm trying to work out here. Um, any other questions from the board members? Okay, Don, I can do two things for you. I can take a poll where you've officially got a poll from the board as to their feeling, do they, are they, do they want the modification or don't want it? So you know, or based on what you've heard tonight with your, with your applicant, I can see both of them on my screen, if, if you just say, okay, I get the, we get the point, we can leave it and you can choose to come back with something else or come back and say, no, we don't wanna make a change.
I, I think that we get the point, I look at it now and I think we have maybe a four-two, uh, against, so maybe five-one against, but, um, you know, I just think that, that the thing is that apparently it's not that big a deal if the town's not gonna fix it. So, I guess it's not that big a deal, you just don't want my clients to have that land.
No, I, I, I gotta say, I think it is a big deal. I, I would, I would say that if the town was in a much better cash position and the town was, was known to make prudent decisions to take roads, so they are in control of them, that would make sense to me for safety and security. But based on my experience over thirty-two years, the town's not gonna take it.
Uh, most, most, most towns are taking easements and not fees, and their awards are a dollar. So I don't, you know, the financial part's gonna be the construction, which would be a DPW issue, not a taking issue. So I would suggest a town taking an easement like all the other towns are doing for the last forty years and, uh, and improve it if they want to.
I can't get, I personally-
Can't speak with that.
Can't even get the town to take a very short road, laid out and defined as access for an easement for four or five affordable units, and we can't even get the, the select board to do that. So to do this is almost-
Good luck.
I'm sorry, and I know I'm on the record publicly.
Bruce, Bruce won't take dead-end roads. Bruce only takes roads that go through. Such a situation like this that provides a loop through, that's a safety situ- situation, as you said. It's also good water loop, when you wanna go install water down there, you have a loop that'll, you know, for the water. But, you know, it's, it's up to the board. The boards, the board spoke, I'll talk to my clients and see where they wanna go. Um, and thank you for your time tonight, I really appreciate the discussion and the input.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, yes.
Uh, we just wanted to thank you for your time and for the care that you've given to the application we submitted. And, um, thank you very much.
And I'll take the time to say it's good seeing you.
It's nice seeing you as well. And Don, thank you so much.
Talk to you later.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, Greg, you still with us? Greg Hall?
Uh, yes, Jerry, I'm here.
Okay, Greg, this, this, I got this on the agenda, um, with, with planning board members. Um, rather than just send out something to you, I wanted the board and you, if, if possible, to get to the meeting to, to kinda give the board an update. This, this subdivision is going on. And I know we've, we've, we've worked through it and we've made some changes, but it's, it's been going on almost six years. This is, this is way too long for a subdivision. I, I really would like to clear it off the books, get your escor account closed and, and done with, and can you, can you give the board an update as to what your plans are to, and time scheduled to finish this and so we can all move on?
Yeah, yeah, it sure has been a long adventure. Um, and, uh, yeah, it took us a long time to actually get it paved, even though we were scheduled to have it paved in the fall. It didn't get paved until the following fall. Um, and then I, what really remains to be done is the, um, road shoulder brought up to final grade, right up to the curb and seeded finally. And I'm probably gonna give up on, uh, grass actually growing in this drought. And, uh, I, I happen to have already started the, uh, we got, brought forty yards of loam in a few weeks ago, which, uh, was prompted because there's a permit pulled on Lot Five now. And, uh, um, that got me back on wanting to finish, uh, their road shoulder. Uh, so that really is the, the last thing to be done. And then the, um, as-built road profiles can be, uh, created by the land surveyor engineer and presented as the, the final as-built for the, the road and its shoulders. Uh, it's my understanding that the pavement and the drainage has been tracked, um, and accepted by Mr. Rogers, uh, with Mr. Brady's, uh, representing us as the engineer.
Yes, yeah.
Um, and I, I did look back through notes, there's one little thing to do, we were supposed to ask the, uh, the DPW to cut into a curb on the opposite side of Volkings Highway to improve the site distance. Um, so I will do that. Uh, and at that point, um, I don't know of any other open issues, uh, that would prevent the board from, um, addressing the closing of the, the subdivision project.
Okay, are all the, um, just out of curiosity, are all the, um, corner bounds, I mean, monument bounds and curvatures?
Oh, right, right. I, I believe there's five more road points that, um, need bounds. They've actually already been staked out. Um, and as soon as the finished loam is in, uh, our, our surveyor, uh, um, uh, Peter Kane can locate those, those bounds and also perform the as-built profiles uh, on the road at the same time.
Okay, um, is Tim Brady involved at all anymore?
Uh, he, he can be if you'd like. I, I don't, not sure he needs to, because-
I don't wanna lead you, I don't wanna lead you down a point, a path. I'll get you right to the point. Um, Billy Rogers, as you're well aware, is, is very thorough. Um, Billy is our representative in, in our last call. Um, so whomever, if it's, if it's, if it's not Tim and it's somebody else, my strong suggestion is that before you go much further or any further, you might wanna get the two of those individuals together to make sure that every I is dotted and T is crossed. I know I had talked to Billy at one point and Billy was concerned with, we have the berms, but then we have a two-foot level area after the berms, it has to be leveled. And-
Yeah, i- i- it's our intent to, to meet the design, which requires-
Good.
Two-foot shoulder, uh, through, through many sections of the road, not all of them, but many of them, yeah.
Good. So if you do that, and I, I think it's a good idea to have those two meet, whomever it is, uh, whoever it is, maybe. Um, just so we're not taking any steps backwards
Sure.
moving forward, and, um, it's good to hear and we'd love to close it. Um, COVID slowed everything down, so totally understand it, but I, I just would like to put it to bed and, and, and move on. So thanks for the report. You, you really will not get- You, you really will not get anything in writing. I can see we're back on track. I think the rest of the board members are. Is there any board members, based on what Greg has just said, or have any concerns at all, concerns or questions?
I do.
Alfred, I see your hand out.
My concern is the berms aren't there yet in some places. If we're going to put all the loam on there and it rains, then it all goes in the catch basin. We're going to be digging it back out.
I think
So we might want to, we might want to watch. I mean, I was in there the other, it's been a while, but I mean, some of the stuff is going across the road, not bad. But I think you may want to really consider watching where the loam goes so it doesn't get loose on you.
Yeah, we're, we're creating a little groove right at the back of the berm so that water that's outside the road should run down the outside and, and not enter the road. Yeah, and it is our intent. We haven't really
The only problem with that is you, you got to make sure that it doesn't wash the bank away because that's why it's got to be, it's got to be seeded. I'm trying, I'm not trying to be negative. I'm trying to hope we can come there and say goodbye.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's been encouraging actually that the steepest banks have held. Even with very limited vegetation to the drought. We did actually redirect some water that comes down the easement, the drive, the hall, Coburn driveway used to dump into the back cul-de-sac. And we created some trenches so that it, it goes into the woods instead of even getting near the bank. And it's to clean out the catch basins before the road association becomes formed.
I'm not, I'm not trying to be negative, Greg. I just want to see, you know, I'm, I'm concerned that the contract will dump a load of stuff there, be on the edge of the road. It'll rain and half of it will disappear on you.
Sure, yeah. I'm the contractor, so I'll make sure that doesn't happen.
Okay, I mean, it's not my project. It's just one of my concerns. I watched what happened the other day somewhere else and two thirds of it went in the catch basin.
Yes, yeah, we'll, we'll be careful about that.
Olga?
Could I have the date that we last received the plans for this? Cause I had trouble going back and finding it.
Which plan?
For this subdivision.
Which plan? I don't mean to, I don't mean to be facetious. The problem is, there's probably, there was a filing of an original subdivision plan. Then there was a re-filing of the subdivision plan when Misa was taken out of it. Then there was another modification to cul-de-sacs, which is the cul-de-sacs. So which plan are you looking for?
Well, we we, yeah, we've received
That is in file at the planning board. So all you got to do is walk into Karen and ask for the file and you can look through that file anytime you want.
Okay.
All the plans are in there.
Okay.
She'll give you that, she'll give you a date of when they came in and, and everything else. But they're all, they're all in there. They stay there, can't go anywhere, but they stay there. Yep. But I know, at least I knew as of a month ago, when I, when I brought this subject up, that she still had them because it's an active file in, in the planning board. They had not gone down to the vault yet.
Okay.
David, Ral, you want to say anything? Or you just?
No, I'm good.
Oh, that's, that's a first. Thank you.
That's a first. Yes, note that, please.
I, I noted that. Okay. Anything else on, on, on the hall subdivision? Great. Greg, thank you very much for the, for the input and the update. Appreciate it.
Jerry, and thank you, board.
Town meeting. All I can say is unanimous.
It made me wonder whether there's some movement of people who are opposed to stay away from plan, from town meeting, but, but you vote against it next week.
Well, no, I, I did.
Don't get paranoid, Bonnie.
I don't know if you
There's a lot of those, Bonnie.
I don't know if I caught it, Bonnie, but I did the, for the first time, not 28, but 32 years that I've been on the board, of that probably 26 years as chair, I have never been requested by the Board of Select to go to a Board of Selectment meeting and discuss why we came up with a zoning bylaw. That was a first. But I think that because it was a 5-0 vote of the board, that they got the point and because it was a Zoom meeting, and as much as I will say publicly that I've fought it originally, it seems to be working better than I thought. And then I think a lot of contractors got the point that we really were not taking anything away from the contractors, that there was something already in the zoning bylaw that allowed those individuals that wanted to work reasonably in a contractor's yard in those two districts already had it. All they had to do is to go to the planning, to the Board of Appeals for a special permit. And they had, the Board of Appeals had latitude. Certainly, casual jury, I doubt very much they would allow anywhere near the intensity that is happening or may happen on that particular property. But there is in fact something within the zoning bylaws that allows reasonable contractors to work. And I think they got that point, Bonnie, and that's the only, you know, normally it's, you hear somebody say a no on at least a zoning article. And I, I think it was just, I was like, oh, okay, there's no questions whatsoever. So it was unanimous and, and I think they were satisfied that they could still work within the bylaw and, and they really, those in Wellfleet really didn't lose anything. Is the only thing I can put my
Well, those of us who are working couldn't attend the meeting, put it that way.
Well, a lot of us did. But, you know, I mean, it's, that's, that's what happens. I mean, you know,
Yeah.
Unlike, unlike what's going to happen at the election coming up next week with the override, those that don't go can put a stop to whatever was voted at town meeting. That's that's not, that's not the way it is with zoning bylaws is the only bite at the apple is at town meeting. And if you don't go to town meeting and vote against it, then you have no recourse. So, you know, we'll, we'll see what happens after Tuesday's election as to what does fly and doesn't fly on the override. But
I'd like to make a, a point about, because there was a, there was a Wellfleet, there was a pre-town meeting where people were discussing each, each of the articles.
Yep.
Right? And the people who were proposing each article were explaining them. And when I, I was on the call, but then for, I had a computer snafu and ended up not being on the call when the article for, the article for the, the bylaw came up. But I was, I was preparing, if, if you weren't on Jerry, or if nobody else was on, to, to say something to explain. And I looked at the minutes and I realized there was no information in the minutes at all as to why we took the decision we did. And I think that I was, my memory did not serve me well because I didn't remember from our meeting that, that the outcome was that, that there was already a provision in the bylaws and therefore it didn't matter. Right? My, my memory of the conversation was, you know, kind of you and David Ral and Albert, you know, basically saying that we needed to really spend the time to define much more clearly in the bylaws, what a, what a contractor's yard was. And so I think this is actually a point about, not about our decision, it's a point about the minutes where there's been some motions to just say what the decisions were and nothing else. But I could have really used, or, or if I'm ever asked as a planning board member to explain a decision that happened, what, I don't know, two months ago, you know, six weeks ago? And I go back to the minutes to refresh my memory and there's nothing there. You know, I don't really have the time to go back and hunt up the Zoom meeting and, and, you know, and kind of relive it all. It would be much better, you know, for the minutes to just, even if it's just two sentences, but to explain why we take a decision, especially on something major like that.
It might be a good idea if when someone makes a motion, they add that explanation to the motion.
Okay. That's an idea.
Because then it's clear.
Yeah.
Not interpreted.
Yeah.
You could if it's, if it's short and sweet. That's an, that's an ongoing
Debate.
Again, yeah, with, with all the years that I've been involved, we have gone from, without exaggeration, four or five pages of minutes to one page of minutes. It, it's, it's all over the spectrum. And the longer the minutes get,
The more debate.
The more debate and the more the individuals, planning board members, and I, I don't mean this disparaging at all, but the longer the minutes get, the more wording in the minutes, the more this, the, the members say, well, that's not what I said. Well, it may not be what you meant, but it's what you said. And it puts a tremendous pressure on the planning board secretary who is listening to those minutes with no, with nothing else going on, like a meeting like this. That's what they're tuned to, just the minutes and what was said. The individual may not have liked what they said, but that's what they said. And I've gone through so many different meetings where, well, that's not what I said. And it turns out that's exactly what you said. And if you didn't want to say it, then you should have been more clearer. But
Well, Jerry, Jerry, this is all going to become moot in about a month when the meetings are taped. So the minutes can stay short and sweet.
The minutes, the meetings are taped. Minutes. No, no.
We'll have a videotape of it.
Well, we, we got a videotape.
Something to refer to, but it does not
I have something to say.
Yes.
So I once, when I started four years ago, yeah, it's me. Hi. Been a long time, long time no see. So I, from what I understand, and Beth was awesome at helping me with this, minutes are supposed to be picked up by the public, opened up. And if you can't, it's not supposed to be verbatim. It is supposed to, so if you read under the topic, say you're talking about a subdivision, you should be able, or I should be able as a public body to pick those minutes up and know what you kind of discussed. And then if there was a vote or a motion, verbatim. It doesn't have to be, it literally should be a half a paragraph. I only know because I do seven pages of select board minutes. I don't do them, I don't do them verbatim because it would, it would be 50 pages. It's pretty much, so they discussed this. It was discussed for this amount of time. This was the motion. This was the vote. This is how it worked. It is literally a half a paragraph. I know that because
This happened before.
Me that.
Minutes are not supposed to give the public
Nope, if they want that, they can
They should be at the meeting.
That's right. If they want that, they should go to the meeting. If they don't want that and they just want to know a synopsis of what had happened, pick up the minutes. I am working very closely with the Board of Selectmen to make them understand and they're really good at it now. Helen is great. You can't change what was said, especially in a motion. But if someone said something, you know, and it wasn't important to the content of what they were talking about, you don't have to put it in there. And yes, your meetings will be recorded. They will not be on TV like, like they are right now. But there will still be a video recorder on there for you. And if you want it on Zoom, it'll be recorded via Zoom when you do it hybrid. But if people don't want to be at the meeting, then they have to accept the minutes the way they are. But you, like Beth said, from when I started four years ago, it's pretty much be able to pick up and read what you basically spoke about, not verbatim. And then vote, votes, motions, whatever, have to be taken verbatim. They cannot be changed. I listened to select board meetings seven, seven times over because they changed their motions so frequently. But because of that, it's, it's the right motion. So you don't have to have verbatim. Like Beth said, it just has to be a synopsis of your meeting. It shouldn't be seven pages because your meetings don't go four hours long like some others that I attend. However, they, you know, two hours is two hours. So your, your, your meeting should be two to three pages long, depending on how long your agenda is.
That's right. It's all based on the agenda, nothing else.
Thank you. So that's, that's Contractor's Yard. Futures zoning bylaw discussion. I don't know what's going to come down for the next town meeting. The two articles that were there have expired. Town council came back on the affordable lot and basically tore it apart. So it was impossible to even have a hearing on it because those changes couldn't be made on town meeting floor. So they're going to have to redo it. I will let board members know, and I, this was not a private conversation, but I did have a discussion with the chair of the Board of Selectmen. And I believe I was respectful. But I said to the chair, if you're going to take on zoning bylaws, which quite frankly, I don't feel you should, but if you're going to, you need to start it and you need to finish it. That means that you need to vent it. You need to propose the article, send it off to town council, get county council's input, bring it back to the board, discuss the amendments that the town council has made, rehear it, reanalyze it, send it back to town council and get a bulletproof warrant article before you send it to the planning board. That's what we do. And if you're going to become a planning board, that's what you need to do. And I think the chair got it. Let's hope he
Finally, huh?
I'm not sure, but I think he got it. But it is not our place to take a proposed bylaw, just like a petition article. I don't care who does it. We can't straighten it out.
We don't fix it.
It is the way it's done. So if the Board of Selectmen is going to take on an article, then learn how to do it and get it done correctly before you send it over to the planning board that can't do anything with it. So that's where, that's where at least one of those articles is, is they're still going, if they choose to do so, and I don't think they have the time, quite frankly, before September, to, to get that article up and running the way town council feels it might need to be because it had a lot of problems. So I don't see at this point any future zoning bylaws unless we're going to take on, we of course could take on whether or not to convert cottage colonies into year round if we wanted to ourselves. That's easy enough. If you want to do it, we have passed it over. We have a majority vote at least twice not to do it. We've got new members on it. Glad to put it on the agenda again. As far as the other one goes, it, it really needs to be vented tremendously before it goes anywhere. I don't, I would imagine, because I haven't heard anything different, that since we didn't vote for the update on all of the general bylaws On all of the general bylaws, the charter. The zoning bylaws. The code will probably be on the September warrant, our, our meeting. To raise and appropriate, at which point. We then can bring in. Help on any zoning bylaws. And there are a number of them that we need to look at. And. Clean up. So it, it will be on the agenda. In the future. Yes.
Can you explain what you said? The, the code will be on the agenda? What are you?
The code, the code, the.
Codification?
Codification would be on the agenda, should be on the September warrant to appropriate the money.
Okay.
They had to peel. I'm surprised, quite honestly, they peeled back the. Annual Town Meeting. To 40 articles as much as they did because they were up around 66. But they chose to. Pull a number of, of articles that would. That needed to be done to September, but I think they also pulled. Articles that they thought would help get a quorum. Right. You know, that's certainly out of my bailiwick and that's, that's their business, what they. Choose to put on a warrant, not put on a warrant, but they knew it was coming up. And maybe they wanted to see, quite honestly, what was going to happen with some of those expenditures at the annual. I mean, there, there was some heavy. Heavy hitting expenditures.
Maybe they want to see what's going to happen with the over.
I'm sure they do. I, I think they want to get a. A pulse as to where the, where the voters are going. And. They will certainly get that come Tuesday evening. Next week.
Jerry, I, I have some questions though. I had asked at the last meeting that we discussed codification. To the best of my knowledge, it has, it is complete. And when I looked at. What it was, because I got the document. All it is, is a renumbering.
That's all it is.
That's it.
Okay, and I have been asking, could we start, and I thought that was, that was this item on the agenda. Could we start looking at? The existing bylaw for things that have to be changed?
So can I just say? Oh, I did this with a. A school committee manual. And all of the. Policies. She was, you know, a huge amount of paperwork. And it took two years. And a subcommittee. And, and bringing, you know, a set of. Of policies forward to the full committee. Every month, it took two years to go through. Everyone to update it, to make it current. To eliminate those that are no longer appropriate. It's a job. And it would be a job for us to do that. I'm not saying that's a bad job. But we have to really commit. A, a serious amount of time and energy to that process.
And I think we should. I think we should do that, and I would like to see maybe a sub, a working group. I for one have. Problems in definitions. It just keeps irking me that professional man is listed as in, in the accessory use, I think. Can't we just get rid of man?
Yeah, that's.
For our. Excuse me, Beth?
That would be simple. That, that's a tech, that's a tech issue. You just replace that word with another word. That's easy. But you have to read every single art, every single.
So let's do it.
But. I'm just going to say, I did it when I did it.
We don't have to do it.
I did it with an expert, not just school committee members.
You don't have to do it. Once you codify. In, in. The codification is done in many ways in different towns. Some towns elect to take two or three years. Just as Beth said. Go through their entire zoning. Make changes. And then codify. Some towns, as Wellfleet did. Decided. To. Not make any zoning bylaw changes. Put the codification in place. With the. Charter. General bylaws. Zoning bylaws. Subdivision control law. And renumber. Simply renumber. All of those changes. To new numbers, new sections. So now, once that is passed on Town Meeting Floor, it's simple. You're not discussing a zoning bylaw change. You're not having to change a number. Which number are we working off of? Are we working off the old number? We working off the new number? We don't have a new number yet. So.
Don't put.
Choice was made. Not to make changes to the charter, not to make changes to most everything, simply take and put everything into the codification. Which means it goes into one place. So you can, you don't have to look to the Planning Board page. You don't have to look to. The Select Board page. You don't have to look to the subdivision control law. It is all numbered, A to Z, with new numbers. At which point, the best point, all you do is you pick up the phone and say, I want to change this name. Throughout the entire bylaw. They make up the zoning bylaw change. No problem. Here's what you have to do to change it on Town Meeting Floor. But it, it, it was not, it was decided not to go, start making those changes. And work with two separate numbers to, it's going to be enough. On Town Meeting Floor, just for everybody to say, oh, okay, it's a whole new numbering system. So then when we get that numbering system, we are going to have to take all of our pages, throw them away. Forget that we had a 6.3. The 6.3 is going to become probably 193. Point one. And then work from there.
Yes.
And as Beth said, we'll probably start with generalities is to say, okay, we want to capitalize these words. We want to not capitalize other words. And there becomes, there's the beginning of a consistency through our zoning bylaws.
An updating.
And it's an updating. So that's the way it's been decided to do it. And.
Who decided that?
I did.
Uh huh, okay.
I did. Talking to the codification company. Talking to. The Assistant Town Planner. Joe Powers, when we started this. Talking to a couple of the other people that were involved in it. And decided that this would be the best way to get it passed. On Town Meeting Floor. Without involving changes to the, as I said before. All of a sudden, well, we want to change the numbers to the charter, but we want to make these changes as well. No. Simple, get it done, get a whole new system, whole new numbering system. In place and then start making the changes with the codification company. And that's.
Can we have some order?
It can change things, but the point is that when I was doing it. It was a school committee that voted, not a town. It's very different when the whole town is voting on your codification system. You have to keep it simple. They're not going to go through every bylaw. So. So it has to be presented to them in a way that's. That's reasonable to, to accept.
But, you know, it doesn't change anything in, in a way, because it seems to me, Olga. Regardless, but we got the new number, we got these new numbers, it kind of straightens everything out in that regard. It does not stop us or anybody else from trying to change and correct. Any other, any number of bylaws. It doesn't, it doesn't prohibit that. And so all we can do as a planning board or individuals could propose it. Let's do, let's work on this. Bylaw or that bylaw, and that's. Or somebody else can say to. The Town Administrator can say to Jerry, gee, I think, could you guys look at this bylaw? Whatever it is, we can work on the bylaws nonetheless.
Well, it seems that we aren't doing that, and I was proposing that we spend some time. Looking at maybe just the things that pop up that don't feel right. That are misleading or are typos. The codification has not recognized those things. They're still in the. Renumbered system, and I would like us.
I'll go, I'm going to report, I'm going to repeat it one more time for clarity. They are copying exactly what we have in our zoning bylaw.
That's right.
That's what they have been asked to do. When it is codified. With the new numbers, and I'm sorry I'm raising my voice, but you got to get the point. When it is done. It was supposed to be done at the annual. We have hit a cash crunch. I couldn't even, I was, I had to beg to get a damn ad in the paper a second time on our zoning bylaws for contractors. There was no money in the account. We are a half a million dollars shy to an override. They don't want to hear about any advertising right now. They didn't want to hear about changing any zoning bylaws right now. They didn't want to go to Town Council right now, but when it is codified. It is a simple phone call to say, okay. Would you please go through the existing bylaw that has now been renumbered and codified? And would you please present us with a punctuation update? And then we'll kick that out in no time. And that's a start. That, that is. That's what they're going to get paid for. And that's the time to do it, not now. It's a waste of time and energy.
So they, they are looking at the quality of. The bylaw, not just typos.
Exactly. They are there.
Because Beth is saying it took two years to go through. The.
Because we did what you're suggesting, Olga.
Yeah, and so I'm saying, why aren't we starting now so that we're ahead two years? Because we've looked at things that we don't think are.
I, I don't know, I, I don't know what, and, and I mean. Beth could certainly go into it if she wants to. I don't know how involved their codification was on the school system. Codification, okay? Ours is not that difficult. We have some punctuation problems. We have some capital problems. We don't have two years in front of us to worry about it. We're not rewriting our zoning bylaws.
Well, I'm saying there are parts that have to be rewritten.
No, but they're not, but they're not materialistically making or breaking the Town of Wellfleet. Like Contractors Yard.
About substantive changes. Are we all go, we're talking about. No, nothing substantive. We're talking about correct pronouns, correct punctuation, correct wordage. Those are simple things to fix. If we're, if we're not talking about a substantive change to any bylaw, because that has to be approved by the town.
And no one has suggested to me as Chair. A substantive change in any of our zoning bylaws. No one has said, gee, let's talk about X, Y, and Z because it's substantive change.
The Local Housing Partnership is looking at the definition of multifamily. We're not. And it seems like we should be part of that discussion.
Well, if they, if the housing authority has a problem with multifamily, they could have easily come to us.
Local Housing Partnership, I think, is the group that is doing it.
They can come to us.
Yeah. Well, they probably will, but we're the planning board. I'm just.
There's very few places you can even put a multifamily in the Town of Wellfleet right now. Anyway. That's it on the report.
I get it.
You get it, hopefully. Bonnie?
So I, I'm, I'm still, I mean, this is not exactly Olga's suggestion, but it's kind of. I, I mean, I'm just, I've been, so we had. The draft. I mean, what, what, basically what you took exception to, Jerry. Was that the Select Board got into the position of drafting bylaws, but they didn't know how to do it. You know, that they came to us with two different bylaws, I think. And. Isn't that our job? To.
Yes, totally.
Take, I mean, I mean, this, this. This is, this. Dating is, has an affordable housing crisis. In some ways, it needs some new bylaws. To both balance the environmental concerns and the concerns for more year-round affordable housing, and that is. The huge issue. That is facing this town, those two things. And so isn't it, I mean, I think we know. That there is a need. For. Some modifications to the bylaws. That would make it easier. To. Us, to create more year-round workforce, affordable. Housing in this town, or, or have a regionalization proposal where Wellfleet and Eastham do stuff together. Like, like at Maurice's campground. You know, and so I just think that. I mean, I think that the, you know, codification aside. I, I do think it's our job to be a little more. Proactive, like if, if Ryan.
Rebecca, why is that going, wait, Bonnie?
I mean, I, I guess, I, I.
Why is that happening?
Excuse me?
Because she just goes in and you went in and out. When you were speaking, Rebecca, and Bonnie just went in and out where didn't hear half the conversation.
Oh, I'm sorry. So you didn't hear everything I said?
No, I didn't hear, I heard two words of it.
Let me stop my video and see if the sound improves. Yeah, okay, so I don't. I don't know where you lost me.
I lost you when you said, why didn't we, something about why didn't we do? The zoning bylaw that the Selectmen chose on affordable.
I mean, I think that. It was, you know, they're making like a good faith, all-out effort to facilitate. The creation of more year-round housing. And some of that can be done through bylaws, and my, my, my single point is. Shouldn't the Planning Board be more proactive? And so if somebody comes to us with that and there's problems with the bylaw, shouldn't we be the ones to just take it over and take it forward?
You can't.
Why, why not? I don't get it.
Well, you can, you can, depending on the time. Everything is a. Everything's a process, a flow chart. Once. For example. Let me take the easy one, Bonnie. Changing. Cottage colonies to year round. We have discussed this as a planning board for over. Off and on for over four years. Is it longer, Alfred, or is that about right?
We've, we've, we've talked about it because. We've taken the. I'm going to be very short. We've taken the cottage colonies that are left. Put a value on them. What a town has. And you're not going to take a cottage colony that has units in it. For 800 or $900,000 or more and make them affordable rental units. That's why I believe. The Planning Board came up with it wasn't going to work. If those cottage colonies had no value to them. Then I could see it working, but you're not going to take two thirds of the cottage colonies in our town, Bonnie. Make them affordable. And actually have anybody live in them affordable because they're too, the real estate is too expensive to start with.
But, but I wasn't talking. But, but I wasn't talking about a specific, I wasn't talking about that specific one.
We talked about that issue over four years on and off, and every time we did, the planning board voted not to take it on and not to recommend going any further with that bylaw. Now, that was the easy one. The plant, the Board of Selectmen chose to say, oh, well, you didn't do, you didn't really discuss it that much. This is what we should do. Well, we've hammered away at it. There's a reason why we did it. We looked at planning. We just didn't come up, wake up one morning and say, this is a good idea and I'm going to make it a zoning bylaw. And because I'm a select person and take charge, we vented it. So now you get to the next article, which was take affordable, take lots that basically were unbuildable, that may or may not have been joined up with septic, that have major, major problems, and you just decide in a whim that you're going to make those affordable because Eastham did it. Well, Eastham did it and it was a lot easier because Eastham went 100% of town water, which eliminated any problem whatsoever with bedrooms. So you have to look at the municipality who passes this kind of thing and their infrastructure. They can't do zoning bylaws that we can't. And we're already on record not grandfathering those lots and not making them buildable in the past. So no, we hadn't. The other thing with it is, once a petitioned article, and I know I've been, let's just say, I think the, I'm not going to use confrontational, but the difference of opinion with the Board of Selectmen Chair is that if an article in my mind does not come from the planning board, it's a petitioned article. Now, Town Council and Rebecca has said basically, Jerry, you're right, but it's semantics. So I refer to all of those as petition because you're petitioning the planning board with an article that we did not establish. So when we get an article from, for example, the ADU, or we get an article from the Board of Selectmen, we cannot change, sure, we might be able to change a comma, we might be able to change a word here and there, but we can't really change the intent of that bylaw because it's been, it's been petitioned. And it can't be changed very much at all on town meeting floor because it's been advertised. So once we advertise a petitioned article, that's what goes on the warrant. And if Town Council comes back, as they did with that particular article, and tore it apart, it's a complete waste of time, but we can't take it over unless we decide, okay, we're going to. But now you got two people working on two different articles. So it, it, it really is a it's sort of a built-in conflict.
So I'll just say one more thing. I mean, because I don't want to, you know, take up the whole meeting with this, but okay, so fair enough, fair enough that there were serious problems with some of the petitioned articles. But um Ken, I guess my basic plea was that we be more proactive in looking for opportunities, either in changing current bylaws or in proposing a new one that would help solve the pro, the how, the town's housing crisis. You know, so, so I, I, I get it, I get it that there were serious problems with some of the articles that came before us. But so then does that mean that we can't do anything? You know, I, I, I kind of don't.
Make a proposal.
Yeah, I mean, in some ways. Yeah, I mean, I think, or the, the housing, I mean, if, if we were working together with the housing committee or council or whatever, or if somebody from the planning board was doing that, you know, all those people together would probably have the capacity at least to make a, a request to the planning board that we develop a, a bylaw for, I don't know. I mean, I, I don't know what the answer is.
Well, okay, therein lies the problem. I don't think any of us know. We, we do have the planning board over the past off and on for 15 years placed zoning bylaws to try and get affordable housing in Wellfleet. Many of those things on zoning subdivisions, reduce lot size, reduce frontage are on the books. But they're not being, they're not being used simply. The one that was working was the um AADU.
That got killed.
Now they killed it. Now we're down to seven. So we basically, and, and I'm not saying it's an, I don't think I'm off of it, but I may be off the subject, but we're not, I'm not certainly saying that affordable housing is not impossible in the town of Wellfleet. But affordable housing is extremely difficult. Hasn't reached impossible, but it's near impossible. In the town of Wellfleet, when you lost 75% of your land, you have developed 20% of it, 20, no, now it's 2075. You've developed probably with the remaining 25, at least 23%, 22% of the existing land already developed. You have no town water or town sewage. So you can't maximize lot, you can't minimize lot size unless you happen to be on the town water system. So we are tremendously handcuffed versus many towns. For example, Eastham, which said, okay, we're not going to put water in for five thou, five million dollars or four million dollars and service 100 hookups. We're going to put in a 25 to 30 million dollar system that covers the entire town. So as it gives us the ability to put up 100 unit affordable housing and other things that Wellfleet cannot do, no matter what the planning board would like to do, you can't do. And then when we do something, some people reduce it and it goes by the wayside. So it is a, it is not, Bonnie, a simple situation that Wellfleet is going to face or able to face as many other towns have done or municipalities. Does that mean that we don't do it? We don't try? No. But you, you do have to take into consideration what we have and what's been developed and what we really can do. And, you know, I was at the town meeting and when I was at the town meeting, and I mean this, no offense to anybody, absolutely no offense to anybody. But when the tree situation was brought up, got to save trees and it's okay, there's a reality of, wait a minute, you get 75% of town of Wellfleet, you really can't take any trees down, national seashore, or it's owned by Audubon. And yet we're sitting at the ball field, literally on the ball field. I see you, David. Literally on the ball field within the fence line, which will always be there. There's not a single tree on it. And we're embarking, and I'm not pro con, I'm not going there right this minute. But we are looking to develop 45 units around that ball field. And we are discussing trees. And I had to look at it and then David Mead Fox stood up and he pleaded a case and it was excellent. And I'm not patting you on the back, David, believe me, I'm not. Made dynamite point. But also Ryan Curley made a real good point. Look around. You want affordable housing, you're going to get affordable housing. But take a look at every tree that is surrounding you because in two years it will not be there. And there is no planting that's going to happen because there's no money in that project to replant the number of trees that we're going to lose. So those are the things that really we have to tie in as a planning board and look at and say, okay, it's a very practical idea to look at the need for oxygen and look at the need to keep trees. But you have to look at also, okay, we've got a chance to put some 45 units up and we're going to lose every tree that we're looking at.
Okay, okay, Jerry, okay. And, and everybody, um, none of this is on our agenda. This is going to be a short meeting tonight. Can I just propose uh one thing? If anybody on this planning board wants us to change a bylaw or take up a topic, they should say so. And if it's something we should vote on to agree to take up that topic because it's going to take up our time and maybe even some money somewhere, then we make, we take a vote on it, we take it up or we don't take it up. This seems to me that's a really simple process. And whether it's, you know, I don't want to even get into the tree thing because the whole point of that is not to say we're not going to cut down trees, period. The point is, since we are going to cut down trees for affordable housing and other things, let's see if there's a way to be smart about how we do that and about are there ways that we can cut down fewer in certain situations? That's all in my mind. And, but that's a gigantically complex project. That's a whole thing for somebody to study. Maybe the select board appoints a committee to do some preliminary work, et cetera, et cetera. That's a separate thing. But the, but for the planning board, I'm happy to get into all kinds of things if all of us want to work on them. Maybe it doesn't have to be unanimous, but a majority should say, yes, we want to, and it may be with something like how affordable housing, that I don't think we're going to suddenly get brilliant, nothing against any of us because we say we're going to work on affordable housing. I'm not sure that all of us are going to come up with something at all. What I could see happening is somebody, probably not us or some, some, somebody in the town writes a grant and gets money to pay somebody who's a super expert on this to consult with the planning board, et cetera, et cetera. But that's again, a discussion we can have if we want to discuss affordable housing or anything else. And obviously tonight's really not the night to do it.
Thanks, David. All right, let's move on. Um, minutes, May 18th? Anyone have any changes?
Nope.
Olga? Can't hear you.
Olga, you're muted.
The COA is now the ACC, just for the record. The Adult Community Center.
When did that change?
A while ago.
It was over a year ago.
Months ago.
No, I'm not. COA has been changed to what?
ACC. Adult Community Center, ACC.
And to remember it easily, you can do it as the Wellfleet Adult Community Center as WAC.
WAC, right.
The WAC Center. You're welcome.
Okay, I'll note that. Um, to her. Anything else? All right, any motion based on the change?
Minutes.
Okay. Second, David? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
All right.
Okay, good. Um liaison report affordable housing report. Alfred, you got anything?
No, I don't, Jerry.
Okay.
Um, let's see, can I, as affordable housing mean we're getting a report from Alfred? I think he's on the housing authority to be their liaison. Could someone just clarify?
What is it, Alfred, that you want?
I would have to ask the same thing. I'm sorry, Jerry. I mean, I go to, I went to the meetings with Whitman. There's like four different housing spinoffs. I'll take care of it tomorrow. If you'd like.
Well, I, I guess the question I have is we've created a liaison position. Obviously by request of the select board.
Mm hmm.
I say that because that's usually where it comes from. That's the only place I know of it's come from. So can we look to what board they've requested that we have a liaison to? Because I got to admit, to me, affordable housing, affordable, they're all, they're all intertwined and I'm not sure which is which. And what one does versus the other that's different from the other. I, it's just.
I think over time they have grown exponentially.
I, I gotta.
Can I answer that?
Yeah, yes.
I do believe that Alfred is the liaison to the housing authority. And I don't believe he's been at many meetings. And I was going to ask if he doesn't want to do it, that I be appointed. But that would be, you know, the planning board, well, the select board. And I also want to report that the 95 Lawrence Road Task Force has been disbanded. So I am no longer making reports because there is no liaisoning to do.
That, that would have been better under announcements and open session.
Okay, I wasn't sure where that.
Yeah, that's where it should have been.
Well, it's a liaison report, yeah.
Thank you. So I'll check in with Rebecca. She'll shoot me, but I'll check in and see who, where it is. All right. All right, you can also do something. Um, we'll both look into it, Alfred. How's that?
That's fine.
Good.
I think, I think there's multiple positions, Jerry. As far as for multiple boards. But I could be wrong.
I, I think they were only, I think we were only asked to be on one. And to me, it would have, would have been something to do with sort of like 95 Lawrence and, and Old Wolf Road and, and that kind of layout situation. But I'm, I'm, again, they're all kind of getting mixed in together to me. I'm sorry. Got my hands full with this. All right.
Just to say, Jerry, that something probably will come up in the future, that probably somebody from the planning board should be appointed to the Maurice Campground.
Haven't, haven't heard a word, you haven't heard a word from Board of Selectmen to the planning board at all.
Yeah, I'm just.
I'm one of the working committees for the Maurice's campground project. Not as a representative of the planning board, but I'm just been called upon.
Yeah, I understand that we've, we've got committees working on it. I'm just, I'm kind of same as Bonnie, I'm kind of baffled at why the planning board would not have somebody representing.
Because they don't want it done right. They want to half ass it, of course. That's natural. Another town abortion.
I agree with you, David, on that one. All right, but um, summer correspondence, discussion of summer meetings. We all, we always meet as a planning board for years, once a month in July, August. And I think we even carried in the September. Um, so I'm thinking and it's, it may have to be a and it's, it may have to be sort of like we did before roving. But if we can at least set up the middle of the month is, in July is the 13th, which is a Wednesday, but that's my day once a year, so there's no way in hell I'm having a planning board meeting on that day.
Are you gonna be 60?
God, do I wish it. I would give anything to be 60.
Well, do we have, do we have enough? Because three weeks from now is actually the first Wednesday in July.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking unless I read it wrong, Bonnie, I, I've got a feeling we may not see that modification come back to us, so I don't think that's gonna rear its head. I really don't see anything, and I can be wrong, believe me, I can be wrong, but I don't see anything coming out of the Board of Selectmen imperative. So I'm thinking the 20th of July and 17th of August. And if we need to, we can adjust accordingly. But does, initially, what I'm looking for from board members is based on the fact that it'll be a hybrid, which I think makes it easier and, and knowing that a lot of us just don't even leave town. Does the 20th of July and the 17th of August work for most members?
Yep, works for me.
I think so. It works for me so long as I can be virtual for both.
Do you if, I'm glad, Bonnie, that the planning board is not the lead first one to go through this because I heard the first one was a little difficult. I think they will get it ironed out, but the way Rebecca described it, I don't think that's gonna be a problem at all. So that works out fine. So let's tentatively say the 20th of, and I'm gonna try and hold to that. I mean, you know, I couldn't do it the 14th, which was yesterday because the hybrid situation cannot do more than one meeting at a time.
Because they use both of these Zoom links, they are working on getting a third email address to go with their Zoom link. So the media services people need two Zoom links to run a meeting hybridly. So right now, there's only two town Zoom links. That will be fixed by the time you guys have your next meeting because we're in the process of getting the Wealthly Media Services their own Zoom link, so it shouldn't be an issue.
Rebecca?
Yes?
I love having you back here this meeting. Thank you.
Hi, you're welcome.
So, I'm, I'm glad that they're working out the bugs. Somebody else is gonna work through the bugs, Bonnie, but it looks like we're gonna be fine with that. So let's just say the 20th and the 17th right now, and I'll try and stay with that. And, you know, in July.
Do you have a question?
Alfred, by all means.
You said that the the other, the plan that we may or may not come back.
Yes.
If we put them off to the regular meeting, as long as we're not past that date, there's no problem with that.
No, we can put, we have 90 days. Remember, it is a, he filed as a preliminary.
Modification, yeah, yeah.
So consequently.
Longer window to act on it.
Well, that, and number two, we don't have to act on a preliminary. We don't really, all we do is give them verbal advice. But we're, we're well within the 90 days on hearing that. But it's preliminary anyway, so if, if, even if he did put in a modification with the meat, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't commit us to a single thing.
It, it doesn't warrant a special meeting.
No. No, it's a modification, so we have a longer window.
So if he, if he brought that back tomorrow, within our rights, we don't have to, we can do the meetings that have been projected.
Exactly. As far as I know, the time element, I would have to tap, uh, check with Karen when she comes back, but I think we're within the 90 days. And logistically, with all due respect, even if we lost the 90 days and we were over the 90 days, we're not committed to anything on the preliminary. And I don't think he would dare spend the client's money to go and prepare a definitive when he knows he's on thin ice to begin with. So if he brings in a new modification and says, okay, I talked to my client and they wanna try this, that's a new form of modification that, that starts the clock over as far as I'm concerned. So we're not in jeopardy to answer your basic question. I, I see no, no problem.
It ain't coming back.
I don't think, I don't think he is either, quite honestly, but we never, we never know, and it's up to him to, to do whatever he wants to do, his client. Do whatever, I'm sorry, to do whatever his client wants him to do. Yep. All right, so being with that, we'll meet on the 20th and the 17th?
Yep, right.
Okay.
A question, are we gonna work on the floodplain bylaw? Are we waiting for Hillary or what?
We're waiting. I'm not willing to move forward on a zoning bylaw because Hillary, Hillary has to send it to us in a definitive form. Although she may be asking us to rewrite. I, I've already talked to Hillary and she is not dead set, and she's talked to, she's talked to, is it Shannon? I think it's Shannon.
Shannon, yeah.
They're not, they're not dead set, Alga, on, on a drop-down date of September. They're, they're opting at this point, they're thinking the annual, next annual.
Okay.
Just so all of you know that. But I have her tentatively scheduled at this moment for the 15th.
Okay.
Okay, because she had to go out of town for this one. She was out of town.
Right.
Okay, and, and so I'd like to see both Shannon and Hillary there to make a presentation and to see what we're, what, what we're really discussing.
On the 20th, you mean?
I'm gonna have to change. I, I told her it would probably be the first meeting in July, and I thought, for some reason, she knows it's gonna be the, I think I was talking the 15th. And she knows it was moved to the July meeting.
Okay.
She said, no problem. So I will let her know and officially have Karen notify her that it's 20th. Okay?
Okay, good.
All right, thank you all very much. I was hoping this would be a shorter meeting, but
Promises, promises.
Yeah, I know, David. And, but listen, you got a lot accomplished. So it was a step forward.
Yeah.
All right?
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Very good.
Bye, everybody.
Enjoy the summer and stay safe. Because it's getting crazy out there.